I'll call to order the November 6, 2017 City Council regular meeting and ask those in the audience who would like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business this evening is under special business is Agenda Bill 7505, an update on Talis parcels 7, 8, and 9, and that update will be given by Keith Niven, our Director of Development Services Division and Economic Development. Keith, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So there was a request made that the City Council get an update on Talis parcels 7, 8, and 9, and what's going on up in Talis, so I'm here this evening to do that. So for orientation, apologize I couldn't get a more recent aerial photo, but this was the best that the Internet had to offer. So this is parcel 7 up here at the very top of Talis. Parcel 8 is kind of back in here, and parcel 9 is right here. I'm also going to talk about water reservoirs. You can see these are the 752 reservoirs, and then here's the pad where the 912 reservoirs have been constructed, and I'll show you photos of those in a sec. So here's the new 912 water tanks. They are built up in parcel 7, and they will provide water to the upper elevations of Talis. This is the 752 tanks. These will be decommissioned and taken down, and what I can tell you is we got the green better. This was not the right color green. You can see them from everywhere. And then this is the booster pump station. It's on Shangri-La, and it's right next to the community park, and it actually pumps water up to these reservoirs at the top of parcel 7. We have completed the paving work on Shangri-La, so this section of roadway, which is down at the, kind of at the bottom of parcel 9, this was damaged from the landslide, and so this paving work is now complete. The only thing that is not complete is the sidewalk and the streetscape on this side, which is right next to parcel 9. It's this looking the other direction, so it's on the uphill side here, and that's because the construction that they're doing on parcel 9 to further stabilize it needs to have equipment in this area, and you'll see a photo of that in a sec. So this is parcel 9. Conceptually, they have offered a stabilization plan, which includes, so I'm sorry, I know this probably better than some of you. So here's Talis Drive coming up. This is Shangri-La as it winds up the hill. North would be to the left, and so this is the part of the damaged road down here at the base of the slide. So what they're planning to do is to actually bury four walls within the property. There's number 2, there's number 3, and number 4 is up at the top, and you can actually see some equipment. I took these pictures today, so this equipment's out there today, and they're basically sinking in big metal plates that then get guide into the bedrock to provide friction against additional earth movement. You can see, this is, this picture here is looking from the top down, so they have a bunch of equipment staged in the middle of the property right now. Parcel 7, this is actually 7 and 8, there's 63 lots up at the top. This is the view. It's a pretty amazing view on a snowy Monday. This final plat was approved by the hearing examiner. It was then appealed to the City Council, and that decision was then appealed to King County Superior Court. The judge remanded that plat back to the city for additional geotech work, and the scoping of that activity is happening right now. So that's my summary of Talis 7 through 9 and Shangri-La and the infrastructure that's being constructed. Any questions or?
Are there any questions of Keith? Seeing none then, thank you for that
Thank you.
...short and succinct update. We'll now move to audience comments. Audience comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics will be given an opportunity to do so shortly. I would just point out that there are two public hearings scheduled this evening. One, the 2018 Proposed Levy and Revenue Sources, and the second, a moratorium on community health engagement locations, also known as safe injection sites. So if you would like to speak on those two things, the appropriate time to speak to those would be after the approval of the consent calendar. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your name and email address on the sign-in sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard on the table in front of me. When recognized, use the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. If any, limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. There's a visual timer at the lectern. When it turns yellow, you have one minute remaining on your time, and when you hear a buzzer, your five minutes are up if you take the full five minutes. With that, again, audience comments are an important part of the process. Please keep them civil, and with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you. I have three individuals signed up to speak regarding general audience comments. Those are comments that are not related to the public hearings. First on the list is Kaylee Jake.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Jake, and I'm at 24706 Southeast 30th Street, Samamish, and I just wanted to give the council and the mayor a quick update. Since we've last met, and I'm also the director of the Teen Cafe, we've had an open house that was very well attended. We gathered some great information, some concerns, and some thoughts from the community, and then since then, we've had conversations with the Parks Department and believe that we've located a better site than the house. This site is at 235 First Avenue Southeast. It's embedded in my brain now. And so what we'd like to do, and what we, we'll submit a full report to the Services and Safety Committee in a couple weeks, on the 14th, but I just wanted to keep you all in the loop of the progress that we've been making, and we're really excited to show all the work that we've done and the information that we've gathered, and then keep the process going. So I just wanted to give you that update.
Kaylee, thank you very, very much.
All right, thanks.
Next on the list, Robert, last name with an S. Oh, there you are. Swanson.
Okay, hold on one second. Uh-oh. Oh, no. Well, you know it. This slideshow just does not want to get put up there. Give me one second. We all know which one it is. Let's see if this man can make it. Let's see. Nope, that ain't doing it. Yeah. Well, hello. So this slideshow, this was the famous slideshow that was never shown, so.
Robert, did you identify yourself and
My name-
...provide your address?
My name is Robert Swanson. I live at 826 Fourth Avenue up in the Isquah Highlands. So this was a going-to-be, a wonderful slideshow that I took pictures all over the Isquah Highlands, starting up past the movie theater, going on down all the way around the neighborhood. It was going to show a couple of things. One is, we all know this, but I'm going to say it again, the 9th and High Street, which would have been a much better location from the high school than, I mean, the elementary school than cutting off the hill and doing it right in front of the place. I had pictures of it. Anyway, so as you go down the street, you're going to see it's one lane going each way, which is fine. I think traffic would be just fine, but as you get down toward where I live, there's an alley. It's Fifth Avenue. It's kind of an alley road, if you want to call it that. There's no sidewalks right there, so you cannot have cars go through that, impossible while kids are going to school, completely impossible. If you saw the picture, you'd see I'm talking about this. You can't have two SUVs. One has to stop, one has to go. This is just in the alleyway. It would be in a danger zone to having cars go down there while kids are walking down there with no safety, no sidewalk at all, so some kid would get run over. So you'd have to put a stop, a sign there, which I, I had signs, that pictures of the signs right down the street here, to show that we do have signs saying no left turns going up and down here during school hours. I'm assuming that's because of school hours. I don't know why they have it there, but I was just assuming. So anyway, the, so we'd have to have a sign there saying there's no way you could have kids, cars go down that alley. Impossible. Very unsafe. The next one is you go down the corner, there's a stop sign. Two cars are literally, physically impossible for two small cars to take a left and a right at the same time. You go there, I had pictures, had my car there, so you could see that there was no, but you can use your imagination. Anyway, so you could not have cars go through in and out right there. And that street there, I had pictures, you can't have two SUVs, and parents love SUVs. You cannot have two SUVs. Anybody that's been up in the neighborhood, I know several of you have been, you cannot have two SUVs. You have to pull over, it's just a mess. You could not have cars go down there, so you're going to basically eliminate that whole place as cars going up and down, unless you want to domain one of the houses and just wipe out that whole place there and build a whole street. Hey, if you got to do that, you got to do it, but I can't see that happening. Then you can go all the way down to the very end of that street, and then you have a, taking a left. You cannot have two cars take a left. That's right next to the hill, right, right there. You can't have two cars. One car has to take a left, and one car has to go this way. You cannot have two SUVs, especially, can't do it. You'd get into an accident. So that's a bottleneck. Then you go up the little hill, which I'm just going to let you know, if you do build a school there, you have to de-ice that hill every single time it snows or gets icy, rain and ice, because nobody can go up that hill. I mean, we all put it on our Facebook, hey, don't go up that hill, go all the other, we have to go all the way around because it's so icy. You literally can't get up, you start sliding back down. It's a very small hill, but it's a known fact up there. Anyway, so then you get to the hospital now. So the hospital, I'm just going to let you know, Mr. Mayor, I know you talked to, you're not part of the City Council, so I can say your name, I hope, but the, you've talked to Mr. Case, I believe, and he's the parking director for the, for the hospital. I don't want to put words in his mouth or anything, I'm just going to say they have concerns. I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to get him in any trouble or say anything, but he has concerns on how all that's going to work out, and I know there's communication going on with that. I also talked to the Isquah Highlands today. I don't want to give any names there, too, but they have extreme concerns on the whole driving, cutting down the hill, water, the whole shebang, kids, where they agree they cannot have cars going down the neighborhood. It's just impossible. So anyway, I had pictures of all that, a beautiful picture of the hill, so we could all see what it looks like, why everybody wants to cut down the hill and put an elementary school there. Anybody I've shown the picture to that even lives outside the neighborhood, that has no saying one way or the other, they go, well, that's a dumb spot. Friends of mine have come over that don't live there, don't live in Isquah, and I show them the hill, I say, what do you think about putting a hill, an elementary school, cut down that hill, and put an elementary school right on top of that? Every single person, and I try not to give, you know, I'm sure there's a little bias comes out of me, I admit it, but I try my best, and every single person said, that is the dumbest idea I've ever heard in my entire life. So I'm just letting you know that it is, there are many people, when we had our first, the, the school board had their first meeting I went to, thank you very much, it was wonderful talking to.
Thank you, Robert.
Next, last on my list is David Wagner.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mine's going to be brief. If that red light comes on, I've been here way too long. Friday, as you well know, we will have a veterans ceremony at the Senior Center, and specifically asking one of you to be there, hopefully it's you, Mayor. You know that we always present a flag in honor of all the flags that we give to the city every year to fly while we have men and women harms way, and we'll do that again. So Friday, 11 o'clock, Senior Center Veterans Day Service, and Friday at 9:30 in the Highlands, two brand-new flags are going to be raised there as well, for the first time, a POW, MIA flag under the US flag. So just would like to invite you out, and anybody from the public is welcome to come as well, and we'll, we'll have a great service, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Last on my list.
Is there anyone desiring, Brian, I see you in the back, come on down.
My name is Brian Weinstein. My address is on file. I'm here to speak to Agenda Bill 7462, which are the school impact fees. I've been following this as it's moved its way to the Council Services Committee, and at that meeting, one of the things we learned from a representative of the Isaquah School District is that they don't charge the full amount of impact fees that they could to developers, and the reason they do that is because they're afraid they might be sued. And so this is the amount that they are legally entitled to charge developers for impact fees, and that calculation is included in your agenda bill. For a single-family home, that's $29,206. For a multifamily housing development per unit, it's $11,535. And what they charge instead, after they give a generous discount, is basically $8,700 for a single-family and $3,400 for multifamily. So what the school district is doing is throttling growth in Isaquah. And throttling growth is something that really is the purview of the City Council, not the Isaquah School District. By charging so little for these impact fees, the school district has made a calculus that there's more money to be had in the forever levies that we have that are assessed on our property via property taxes than to get a lump sum amount from developers at the time that the impact fees are supposed to be collected. And of course, that makes total financial sense. Would you rather have the present value of $20,000 today, or the present value of several hundred dollars spread across all the houses in Isaquah for forever? So that's an infinitely larger sum. But again, when we've talked about growth, and we've talked about traffic, and we've talked about the impacts to overcrowding in our schools that are causing the school district to look for land anywhere they can find it and build schools any way they can find it, they are in part creating a problem for us and themselves. My hope would be that the council could look at this agenda bill, table it, send it back to committee, send it back to the school board, have them charge the full amount that they are legally entitled to charge, and not be afraid of being sued by developers for doing the right thing that they're legally entitled to do. It shouldn't fall upon the taxpayers and the residents of Isaquah again to make up for a difference that the school district has the ability to make up for themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Steve?
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Project for the Isquah School District. I just wanted to clarify a few points, that the school impact fees are put together in accordance with a sub-element of the King County Comprehensive Plan, and in that plan, there is a mandatory requirement for a 50% discount off the calculated amount. So Brian's numbers aren't quite accurate. There's a big difference between what is the 50% discount and the $20,000 number that he was talking about. I would be happy to explain further in other situations and circumstances, but there is a 50%. We are not afraid of being sued by the development community. Nearly every year, we mount a pretty strong effort to counter the building community who is down in Olympia lobbying very hard to eliminate the collection of impact fees. So that's the balancing act. It's not being afraid of suing, being sued by developers. It's the real threat of losing the ability to collect any impact fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else desiring to speak during general audience comment? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Mopin, 100 Big Bear Place Northwest, Isaquah. It does seem to me that a lot of our codes, laws, and other things are tilted a bit in the favor of the developers in a way that is not helpful to the cities. I'm not sure what the remedy of this is, but I do note that that seems to be the case. And I'd also like to address the process we have on some of our really emotional topics like safe injection sites. It seems to me that prior to having the public hearing, it would be helpful to have an opportunity for people to hear from experts who really understand the topic, so that people are speaking from a good knowledge base rather than from an emotional reaction. I don't think we really know a whole lot about the safe injection sites. Originally, the human resources people and some other groups were supposed to look at this and bring something back, and that got wiped away. So it just seems to me it would be more helpful to the council to hear from people after they've had a chance, to hear from people who really know something about the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Steve?
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, members of the public. Keith, you didn't share your caffeine with me, so.
Steve, would you identify yourself?
Sorry, Steve Pereira, 170 Northeast Dogwood Street, Isquah, for about 10 years. So first of all, a couple thank-yous, because we don't say thank you enough, and it's good we put that out there. Thanks to the Sam and Dave volunteers. My nephew's particularly liked where you could paint the rubber fish and then make a portrait of it, and they allowed them to dry there, so you didn't have to take a wet portrait and carry it around, so kudos to all the staff for that. Second, scarecrows are displayed about Old Town, kind of a cool fall Halloween event. I think that was kind of cool. I guess kind of related, they have the pop-up free, or fresh vegetable stand at the historic Shell Station, so that was kind of cool to see out there. Next was, I'm seeing an increased presence of the Isquah Police Vehicles about town, so I'm glad to see that. Thanks to the police. Thanks to the city for expressing their concerns on that. The next issue was going to be somewhat similar, where Elizabeth Mopin talked about emotionally charged topics, and that's Providence Heights Campus. It seems like people who have fought for it have had to fight to get the city to recognize that its historical site has cultural and artistic ability. Don't understand why that happened. There was a presentation for the hearing examiner that said that there was not a process correctly followed for historical sites. The King County Historical Commission met. The city church representative suggested that they meet an executive session to see whether or not there were any constitutional issues regarding a church site being met. They came back and voted 5 to 0 that it met historical considerations for being considered. So it's, would be easy to say that it's heartbreaking to understand that this site is again threatened by demolition. Beyond that, though, and to be frank, it's, makes me kind of angry that we're at the place we are today, where this happens today, where the city has decided not to fight a threatened lawsuit. There are processes in place in the process that says we have an appeal process within that historical designation process that wasn't followed. All of a sudden, there's a new entity, instead of a plateau limited liability corporation, there's an organization called Church Home that presented the city with a threatened lawsuit. It just seems like a break in the public trust for the city not to follow that process. I don't use those words lightly, I'm not saying that there was a break in public trust, but it certainly feels, looks, sounds that way. I don't know at this point that there's something next to do from the city's standpoint. It seems the city's made a stand. I'm not sure what the next site is for this process, but I think process-wise, we need to look at this, we need to, I'd like to hear feedback from the city on why that process didn't seem to happen, and what steps need to be taken to change the process so that gets followed. Again, there were four criterias on why the site had historical, cultural, and artistic preservation up to 0, but that doesn't seem to be taken into consideration. I'm very disappointed and, again, angry. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third, and, David?
Good evening. David Kapler. Just remember, sometime in the future when you are given, have asked to a resolution supporting a school district bond, think about what you do tonight about getting those fees appropriate, because if you don't get them right tonight, we're going to just mean that bond in the future will be larger. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Julie Clark. I live at 915 Bear Ridge Court Northwest, and I just wanted to come down tonight, a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank whoever was responsible for the bike, or the skate park. It looks like it's being well-used, and it's nice to see young adults and kids out there during the day and early evenings using it, so I appreciate that it's been placed in a place where it's accessible and seems to be well-used. Second, I wanted to make a request. I had sent an email last week about transparency within the city and between the different departments, and I'd like to again request that there is an effort made to increase the transparency. It seems that some departments have had information regarding Talis parcels and their stability, and that information was not provided to the hearing examiner or the city council prior to permitting being issued. So I wanted to just address that and request that there is an effort to have the different groups within our city work together and to recognize the need for information being brought forth so that everybody can make a well-informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Mary, you held out to the end, perhaps.
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 26-
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Isaguas, Washington. I also want to say that I really think going into the budgeting period, we need to look at all impact fees, not just the school, because the school has admitted they have not been collecting what they could in the past. And with developers adding TDRs to their sites, and we're not getting any affordability in our homes and things that are being built as far as affordable homes or apartments, we're driving the market skyrocketing. So those of us who live here now can't afford to stay here because of the increased rates in property tax. Developers have not and still are not paying their fair share, because during last year's budget process, you still did not elect to cover all the development impact fees by developers. And what I've heard so far this year, that still not being proposed by city staff, that you fully cover the development services fees, and it's a fully burdened rate, because it hasn't been in the past. Also, we've talked about during the budgeting, or was talked about budgeting process last year, that there would be studies done for levels of service that are, the levels of service for the police and some of the other staff are based upon 2006, 2007 numbers. And I haven't seen any studies that have been updated, and I know there's some preliminary talks that we do need, or it'd be nice to have three more policemen added to it, but what is that based on? We need to have transparency. We need to do real studies that accurately show the levels of service that we want and based upon the existing and the predicted population throughout the year, because we're growing drastically and we're bringing on a lot of new homes over the next year or two. And we also know, especially with police, it takes two to three years to get a policeman up and running once you have him onboard, so you have to plan for that. The other thing I haven't seen is a recent concurrency. And when we went through the development hearings and studied the transportation, the studies that were done for the Central Area Plan, there were some major flaws in that, and we were told that we were going to have a new concurrency study done. But what is that going to be based upon for this year's budget, so we can help really see what is needed, and then also go back and charge the appropriate impact fees for developers? We're way behind on what we need in infrastructure, and right now, the way it exists is you're expecting existing homeowners to pay for it. And yes, are the value of our homes are going up, but those of us that are on a fixed or limited income cannot afford to have our property taxes go up unless we move away and sell our house and go to another place. And if that's what you want, keep doing what you're doing. But I would hope that you have more transparency in this year's budget, and you get it out to the public so we can see what's being said and the numbers, what the numbers are being projected and what they're based on. Because right now, what I've seen that's been available to the public, we can't add up any column or really see how the total budget is being rolled up, and we need more transparency on, not only the impact fees, but on everything in the budget so the citizens can understand what our taxpayers are going to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Anyone else? Third and... Geraldine, come on down.
Geraldine Carey, 955 Seventeenth Avenue Northwest Isaguas. I've been a resident in Isaguas for 40 years, and I guess I'm getting to be on the older side. I know there are a few here I see who have been here longer than myself, but I have voted every year for a lot of the bonds and levies. And I'll tell you now, unless the city and the school district does something different and charge the developers their impact fees and not make me, a citizen of Isaguas, pay higher property taxes, I will not vote for the February levy or bond that's going to be put before me. And it's the first time in 40 years that I have not voted for it, but I just kind of feel like hearing, everything I hear about the school board not charging the correct impact fees makes me pretty angry. And I'm not going to support the school system if they're not going to take into account what, how it impacts my personal finances. The other issue I have, and without the Isaguas Press, I'm kind of dumb. I mean, the Isaguas Press to me was the heart and soul of Isaguas, and I'm really sorry to see it gone. I feel like the, you know, the news isn't getting out there, and I have an interest just to find out where this safe injection site's going to be. I haven't heard anybody talk about where it's going to be located and, you know, whose neighborhood it's going to be put in, and so I would like some clarification from the City Council as to where they think they're going to put this safe injection site. It might be out there, but I, as a citizen, have not found it on any information I have read. And if you're going to be putting this into our community, we, as citizens, need to be told where so that we can understand how it's going to impact our community, how it's going to impact, you know, the area that it's put in, where it finds a home. I think the next door to the Police Department is my favorite site. So with that, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Geraldine. Anyone else desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call. Seeing no one, then audience comments are closed, and we'll move now to Committee and Regional Reports. Mariah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report this evening.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I attended my first Washington State Public Works Board meeting last Friday, and basically, they were extending contracts because of the state not passing the capital budget, hoping to get that passed sometime so they can issue some more loans. And just to mention that, from the Isaguas standpoint, you may not be aware of, but we've gotten two loans in the recent past. One for 1.1 million for Newport Bridge and 170,000 for sewer line repair. So we've been benefactors of that program as well. Infrastructure Committee will meet on November 16th at 6:30 here. The agenda is not quite together yet, so it'll be out shortly. I was with the Regional Transit Committee. We had a work session on the 25th of October, talking mainly about, again, how to, the metro development program, which is really looking at how they're expanding their service, you know, working towards their planned 2025 system, which is quite an expansion from what the current service is. So they're slowly taking some steps on that, and we're working with them on that. So hopefully, we had some expansion this last fall schedule. Hopefully, this spring, the new schedule will bring some more bus lines in the various places. I'm not sure where yet. That's what they're working on now. So hopefully, a little better transit in the near future. Emergency Management Advisory Council, we met on the, or will meet, excuse me, on the 8th of this Wednesday. We'll be looking on relocating some grant funds that have not been used in one area to put them in another area. And then the Eastside Transportation Partnership was scheduled to meet this Friday, but due to Veterans Day, it's been moved to the 17th, and we don't have an agenda for that yet either, but I'll be attending that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Bill. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board met last Thursday. There are two items of special interest on the agenda for Isaguas. First, the Regional Center Framework project. That update is still out for public comment, and they'll be receiving public comments through this Wednesday. Now, the, just today, the city of Seattle, King County, the Port of Seattle, and possibly Bellevue, and also representation from staff at Sound Cities Association, put out a letter of potential, it's draft, it's not finalized, and I will forward that to everybody here on the council as well. It's a very nice summary of a lot of what I think, from an SCA perspective, comments about the framework update. It's about four pages long, and I'm asked, city administrator, this, just this evening, that how and whether, because what SCA did was ask whether or not the city of Isaguas wants to sign on to that. We just got that today. So hopefully, you guys will take that up at Leadership on Wednesday. And I think it also, so GMPB member cities, but also Executive, PSRC Executive Board member cities, they're asked of whether or not they want to sign on to that letter. So that's the framework update, and then it's actually targeted for completion, possible completion, still before the end of this year. The other item that we spoke about, they're kicking off an update to the Vision 2040 document, and I think that was updated within about 10 years ago. So this, a lot has happened since that last update of the Vision 2040. There's been a lot of growth of employment. There's been growth in the region in general. There's a lot of new infrastructure, just the floating bridges, for example, the Kitsap County Fast Ferry System. There's been quite an investment in the infrastructure, and the robustness of our regional economy still has a huge impact. And so there's also been a lot of planning work that's been done in the region. There are three new regional centers, of which we are one. And so this update, which they're going to call Vision 2050, is actually going to be a multi-year process. So they're just kicking that off, and they're targeting to complete this update by actually 2020. So there's going to be a couple years of work to get that done. So we'll be hearing more about that as we progress. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Tola?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to point out that SCA's deadline for requests for appointment to SCA-related bodies and boards, which is GMPB, GNPC, and a whole slew of others, including a number of transportation-related entities, that is all due tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. So...
10th?
I have it, I have it as, I have it as from Caitlin McGee at SCA, is 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 7th. So let's assume that unless we hear otherwise. And we can double-check on that after the meeting. I want to point out that that is also for reappointment for existing boards, so if you want to stay on what you're already on, you're going to need to reapply. Then 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 8th is, we have the SCA Pre-Pick Workshop. We're going to be focusing on domestic violence and firearms, a new regional approach, which is, of course, receiving a new and terrible focus with the events from Sutherland Springs, Texas on Sunday. It just so happens that this was the topic for this week, for this meeting, but we're going to have Bothell Police Chief Carol Cummings, Judge Ann Levinson, retired, and David Martin, Senior Deputy Prosecutor in the King County Prosecutor's Office Domestic Violence Unit. So it should be a timely conversation. Then at 7:00, we have the SCA Pick. We will be taking the second read on the SCA 2018 Legislative Agenda, and I will be talking about that in For Good of the Order this evening. Then 9:00 a.m. Friday, November 10th is the E911 Leadership Group in the Chinook Building, Suite 123. 6:30 Tuesday, November 14th is Services and Safety Committee. The agenda is TBD. And I just want to point out that at 5:30 p.m. Wednesday, November 29th is the SCA Annual Meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're not going to be there, let me know. If you don't want to be there, Stacy, if you don't want to be there, let me know. Mary Lou, if you don't want to be there, let me know. If none of the three of you want to attend, then I will be happy to represent the city at that meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Tola. Eileen?
No report this evening.
Mary Lou?
Thanks. It's a hard act to follow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items, both related to Eastside Fire and Rescue. Thanks to Councilmember Tola Marks for actually standing in at this meeting instead of our regular reps. It was the Finance and Administrative Committee meeting on October 25th. It was at the Headquarters on Newport Way. The one item of interest to Isaguas is there was a discussion of alternative revenue sources and a new fee for motor vehicle accidents, responses to motor vehicle accidents. It would require a board resolution of Eastside Fire and Rescue in order for it to come into effect. There will be a point in time in the future, maybe within the next few months, where I'll come back at For Good of the Order and ask for your direction on whether or not Isaguas is in agreement that this would be a good idea. It is currently allowed under the state RCWs. It has minimal impact on E4 staffing. It's a third-party cost recovery from insurance providers, and it's estimated that it would be about $670 per response. There's a lot of data and information on how they came up with this number and also how they came up with revenue forecasts, but it is rather a divided issue right now, and so I think we're not going to see it back here for several months. The next item is the agenda for the November 9th Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting is out. There will be an overview of volunteer recruitment. There'll be a new business item on developing for the first time, a legislative agenda, and a continued discussion on standards of response for coverage, which is something that's been reported out here before. And that will be at 3:00? Nope. 4:00 at Headquarters on Newport Way this Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore met on November 2nd, and one of the items on the agenda was concerning the Costco easement, and that is Agenda Bill 7459, and it's on the consent agenda for approval tonight. Next item was the Agenda Bill 7493, Lake Sammamish State Park. The State Parks has asked the city of Isaguas to participate in the preparation of an environmental impact statement for possible future development at the park. Development meaning new and interesting and fun things, not necessarily, or not typical. I use the word development, but that's just a broad word. There has been a plan in place for improvement at Lake Sammamish State Park since 2007, and so this environmental impact statement would take in the, and consider the activities that are in that plan, as well as the potential of moving the entrance closer to SR 912. And the, don't seem to have it in my notes, but I believe the request for the city shares just under $300,000, and Parks would be contributing $300,000 as well. The committee enthusiastically recommended approval of that agenda bill, and it's coming to the full council at an upcoming meeting on regular business, so we'll have a chance to discuss that further. We also talked about end-of-development agreements, and the committee requested that come back for continued discussion at the committee, because we had just seen it twice, and it's a very large topic. We also had Agenda Bill 7342, Architectural Review and Design Guidelines. This was related to the moratorium, and that'll be back on regular business before the full council on November 20th. And then we also had our first introduction to inclusionary zoning, and that also has to do with the moratorium, and the agenda bill will come to Land and Shore next month, and that's actually on the consent agenda tonight for referral. The next Land and Shore meeting is expected to be a special meeting, and we haven't set the date yet, and that's for discussing the end-of-development agreements. That's my report.
Thank you. I, it is the 10th, isn't it?
You know, there is a deadline tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. It is the city's deadline. The city would like to have people inform you and Stacy of our intent to make sure there isn't a collision of multiple applicants for the same position. So I apologize. There is a deadline. It is not the SCA deadline, which is, as you say, the 10th. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you for that clarification, Tola. And I'm attending the annual Sound Cities Association meeting, but everyone, of course, is welcoming. The, part of that agenda and annual meeting is the approval of the budget and assessments for next year. Just briefly, at the recent ICMA conference in San Antonio, Emily Moon, our Assistant City Administrator, received the Assistant Excellence in Leadership Award. This award honors a local government management professional who has made significant contributions towards excellence in leadership as an assistant to a chief local government administrator or department head. So Emily, I think you're in the back there somewhere. Congratulations. And in addition, the pre-CMA awarded Isaguas the Silver Circle for the Most Creative Activity with the Least Dollars Spent. And thanks to Autumn and her team for doing an outstanding job producing the April Fool's Day video, Fish Are Friends, Not Food. And if you've not had an opportunity to see And if you've not had an opportunity to see that humorous video, you can check it out on YouTube. And that concludes my report. We'll now move to the Consent Calendar. And I'll ask the city clerk to read the lengthy Consent Calendar into the record, please.
Thank you. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payable and payroll dated November 6. Items B through F seek approval of the following meeting minutes. October 9th, Council Committee Work Session. October 12th, Council Budget Work Session. October 16th, City Council Regular Meeting. October 24th, City Council Special Meeting. October 24th, Committee of the Whole Council. Item G, AB 7389 of the 2018, excuse me, Arts Grant Recommendation. This seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item H, AB 7459, Termination of Costco Easement. This seeks approval. Item I, AB 7478, Human Services Commission Midterm Appointment. This seeks confirmation. Item J, AB 7486, Newport Way from SR 900 to Southeast 54th Street. Quarter Concept. This seeks referral to Council Committee Work Session and referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item K, AB 7488, Establishing a Multifamily Housing Property Tax Exemption Program for Proposed Transit-Oriented Development Parcel. This seeks approval of a resolution notifying the public of intent. If approved, this resolution will be assigned number 2017-15. This item also seeks referral to Council Committee Work Session. Item L, AB 7490, Amendment to Route 269 Transit Service Direct Financial Partnership Agreement. This seeks authorization. Item M, AB 7491, The 2018 Legislative Agenda. This seeks referral to Council Committee Work Session. Item N, AB 7495, Franchise Agreement with Seattle Limited Partnership, which does business as Verizon Wireless. This seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item O, AB 7497, Washington State Department of Ecology Centennial Grant Regarding Issaquah Highlands Wetlands Water Quality. This seeks authorization to submit grant. Last item, excuse me, Item P, AB 7407, Amendments to Issaquah Municipal Code and Central Issaquah Standards Regarding Inclusionary Zoning Requirements for Central Issaquah. This seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you, Tina. Have the accounts payables and payroll of November 6 been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. I would ask if any council member desires any item from the Consent Calendar to be removed and considered under regular business.
I move to adopt the Consent Calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to our first of two public hearings, Agenda Bill 7392, 2018 Proposed Levy and Revenue Sources. Jennifer Olson, our Director of Finance, for a staff report before I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. Tonight pursuant to state law, RCW 84.55.120, the city is required to collect property tax levies and must hold a public hearing with regards to all the revenue sources that are included in the upcoming budget. For 2018, the, this budget is proposing to increase the limit of 1% in the property tax levy. And so, I'd like to go through a brief presentation of all of the revenue sources, which does include property taxes. And then, we'll hand it over for the public hearing to start. It is anticipated that the public hearing would be continued to the next council meeting, and that would be November 20th. So, for the 2018 Proposed Revenue Sources, the revenue forecasts were based on financial management policy, which is set to be conservatively objective so that we minimize our risk of not being too optimistic about those revenue sources that come in. The city receives a number of revenue sources. Those include property taxes, sales taxes, B&amp;O, utility taxes, lodging tax, real estate excise taxes. In our licenses and permits category, we receive revenue associated with business licenses, building permits, and other permits and licenses. Charges for services are typically included, such as jail fees, development review, sometimes referred to as plan check services, recreation and programming fees, and utility rates for our water sewer and stormwater funds. Intergovernmental revenue or shared revenue comes from our federal, state, and local granting agencies, sales tax mitigation, liquor profits, and criminal justice sources. We also receive impact fees, such as traffic parks, police, and mobility-type fees. We have a little bit of technical difficulty.
Robert, you weren't the only one.
Just wanted to sleep. Sure.
Oh. Yeah, that's not good.
We could call Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Getting some sparks in the back there.
So, where's the plug? Whoa.
I need a, sure.
I can either shut it down.
We just need to plug it.
Okay. There you go. You can proceed now. Can you pull it up on here?
I can't get it. Yeah.
I'm going to pull up an alternative PowerPoint, but we will not be able to put it on the screen. The council was provided a preview of the slide deck, so I'll go through that. And if you bear with me just one moment, please.
difficulties.
All right. I'm ready to proceed if you are, Mayor.
Anytime.
Okay. All right. Total sources of revenue for the 2018 proposed budget include all city funds. Revenues tally $129.5 million. They're broken up by a number of different types of revenues. Our largest in the pie chart is essentially our charges for services, because that includes, when you talk about all revenues for the city, it includes our utility rates in our utility funds. That's at 32% of all revenue sources come from charges and services. Taxes are the next-largest source of revenues that come at 31%. And then, we have intergovernmental or shared revenues. And those are, that come from federal, state, and local granting agencies and other shared sources, such as liquor profits. On the general fund side, which is our largest fund, this is our major operating fund, the proposed 2018 general fund revenue equals an 8.7% increase from 2017. New sources in the general fund include rebate program sources, E-911 escrow, and increased recreation program enhancements for new programming that has been proposed. Expanded existing sources include the property tax levy and the limit of 1% that increase. We're expanding permit and development charges based on what is anticipated in the project pipeline. And we're also anticipating an expanded cost allocation charges. And what that means is that funds charge other funds for the direct service that is For the general fund, it's estimated that we'd receive in 2018 a little over $50 million. The largest portion of general fund revenue does come from taxes. So, that shifts when we talk about just the general fund. We've got proposed about 69% of that $51 million comes from a number of different tax sources. The next-largest portion of the general fund with regards to revenue sources comes from charges or goods and services, and that is our building permit and license revenues. We also receive cost allocation charges in the general fund as departments, such as the Finance Department or Administration Department, charge out for services that are provided to other funds, such as the utility funds. A further breakdown of the general fund taxes include 43% of that total in the general fund coming from sales tax. And the largest component of Issaquah's sales tax are from the retail sales tax portion and the construction portion of the sales tax. The next-largest type of tax that comes into the general fund comes from property taxes, and that's at 26%. Then, we have our B&amp;O taxes at 15% and our combination of a number of different utility taxes, which include cable, which include natural gas utility taxes, that is at 14%, which makes up our total tax portion of the general fund. Sales tax revenues continue to trend upward for 2018 in a stable economy. The property taxes, which are the second-largest type of revenue source in taxes, are proposed, as I mentioned before, at the 1% limit allowed by state law. This equates to 60, excuse me, $86,698 for 2018. The King County Assessor's Office provides overall assessed valuation information and the estimated levy amount. In 2018, the assessed valuation for the City of Issaquah only is over $10 million. The 2018 proposed regular levy is $8,993,478. And this is a number that, as we develop the budget, remains somewhat fluid because we start to receive preliminary estimates from King County Assessor's Office. And I just, today, actually received the final estimated general levy that the city is allowed to assess, and that is at $8.9 million. For 2018, the proposed excess levy is $1,750,000. This is the voter-approved portion for a ballot measure in previous years. The amount does not necessarily tie to the amount of debt associated, the principal and interest payments, because there is existing funds in that debt service fund to help pay down the bonds that were issued based on the voter's approval. So, that regular levy then equates to, for 2018, a proposed tax rate of 89 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation. The proposed excess tax rate would be 17 cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation for a property owner. Property taxes are combined by jurisdiction on a property owner's bill. The total tax rate in 2017 for all taxing jurisdictions was about $9.90 per 1,000 in assessed valuation. And all taxing jurisdictions on a property owner's tax bill include authorities such as the Regional Transit Authority, King County Flood Zone, Port of Seattle Ferry District, Emergency Medical Services, Library District, King County, City of Issaquah, State School Fund, and the Issaquah School District. A 2017 tax bill with an average-valued home of about $700,000 would, for 2017, would bring in a City of Issaquah tax bill of about $786. And so, this is probably easier to understand, if it had been up on the screen, to understand that the tax bill for a property tax owner comes from all of those taxing jurisdictions or is made up from all of those who assess property taxes. But the portion of the tax bill for the City of Issaquah for 2017, at that house valuation, would be $786. Now, when we start to look at the next year, the new year, we've got a regular levy rate for Issaquah was 94 cents per 1,000. And in 2018, it is planned to drop to 89 cents per 1,000 because of that assessed valuation going up overall. For 2018, on the excess levy, that in 2017 was about 18 cents. That is now planned to go down to 17 cents per 1,000. The reason that the rate goes down, as I mentioned, is that property values are going up faster than the state law allows for a property tax levy increase. So, just to give an example, is that in 2017, property tax assessed valuation change for the City of Issaquah about 11.3%. And that is an average amount. It is different for your actual, your actual home or business from a valuation standpoint. In 2018, it is estimated that properties are going, property valuations are going up 12.3%. And just to give another quick number history-wise, in 2016, property values went up 9%. So, over a three-year period, we have a 9% increase, an 11.3% increase, and an estimated 2018 increase of 12.3% in assessed valuation change. So, if we go back to then, the property tax bill, and what we don't know is, we don't know what the other jurisdictions are planning for their rate, their portion of the property tax bill. But if we were to use the same rates, but we were to apply the new City of Issaquah proposed tax rate, the tax bill for an average-valued home of $700,000 would go down $3 a year to So, a little bit about other taxes that the city takes in. B&amp;O tax, which is that third-largest portion of the taxes that come in. A little bit of history here, back in 2015, on April 1, the B&amp;O tax rates increased. This is then the reason why our sources have gone up. This, and one thing to make note of is that nonreligious hospitals and clinics no longer are exempt from B&amp;O tax. So, that combination with the rate increase started to bring our revenue sources up in this area of taxation. This is a strong or stable tax source that we see in our forecasting. Utility taxes are also somewhat stable. There was a decline in 2016 due to some unseasonably warm weather, but we are... There was a decline in 2016 due to some unseasonably warm weather, but we are seeing our utility tax revenue sources also trending upward in a stable path, trending up. Real estate taxes is another taxing source that the city collects. Just a quick reminder is that the REIT taxes are collected or proposed to be collected in a new separate special revenue fund for 2000. We started in 2017 with some changes, and we had a very large one-time increase due to a real estate transaction that added for 2017 about $750,000 in REIT taxes. But we are estimating that REIT sources would be going up. This is one of those places, though, that we want to be a little bit more conservative in our forecasting, and so the budget for 2018 reflects that. We also have some increase proposed for Development Services revenues. In the information provided for tonight's presentation, you would see that planned check fees are estimated to go up based on the projects that are in the pipeline. Building permit revenues are somewhat staying the same. And then we have engineering and inspection fees that are also staying the same. For the enterprise funds, this includes the funds for utilities of water, sewer, and stormwater. 97% of our operating revenues in the enterprise funds do come from utility rates. Just another note is that for our King County Metro Sewage Treatment Rate, this is planned to stay the same from this year at $44.22 per month. The City of Issaquah establishes rates on a five-year schedule. We're in our third of five years in the last ordinance that was adopted. The rates increasing for this year are proposed to be at 5.5% rate increase for water, 5.5% increase rate for sewer, and a 3.5% rate increase for our stormwater. And our total proposed utility funds, by fund, are for the Water Fund, we anticipate about $9.8 million coming in. The Sewer Fund, $9.9 million coming in, and the Stormwater anticipating $5.2 million coming in. And with that, that concludes my presentation on our sources of revenue proposed for 2018.
Thank you, Jen. Are there questions of Jen at this time? No?
Yeah, just to clarify a couple of numbers. So the 1% increase that we're allowed you're talking about, you said was $86,000 total to the city?
Yes.
I didn't find anywhere where that was broken down to that average $700,000 home evaluation. What would that be? Because at one point, you said it was going down from 786, 783, so I got confused in there. So what, if you're saying it was $786, $786 per house for City Visqua taxes, with the 1% increase, it would go to what?
It would go down to an estimated $783. It's a 3% reduction.
$3 reduction with a 1%.
$3 reduction, yes, you're right.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how that math works. I know that the price per 1,000 can vary, but the total.
If your valuation goes up and you stay at or you decrease in a rate not at the same level, you may see a reduction if your valuation doesn't change because the city's rate is planned to go down. So you would see a reduction. However, if your valuation goes up based on the county's assessors' values, then your property tax bill would be at that new rate per 1,000.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of Jen? Seeing none, the council was provided. Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. I didn't have any. I just thought of it as we're closing. Can I ask one question?
Of course.
Thanks. So Jen, this is going to be kind of, maybe sound kind of simple and silly, but if folks' tax bills are going up and we are telling them that we actually are going to collect a little less next year, but, you know, they're seeing a 10% increase in their bill, where is the increase going to?
The increase in the cities?
So if my tax bill is $4,000, and I know it's broken down into all those different portions, but my tax bill last year was $3,000, but then the city portion of it is actually going to be a little less, where are their tax dollars going for that year-over-year increase in assessed valuation? Is the state getting the money? Is the county getting the money? Like, who, where's the money?
It depends, it would depend on which jurisdiction. So it would be going to either the Regional Transit Authority, the King County, the Library District, Emergency Medical Services, the Port of Seattle, State School Fund, or the School District. So those are all of the parts of a total property tax bill.
Right. So when they see their increase, but their city portion's actually a decrease, it's just our jurisdiction then that isn't collecting, so their tax dollars are getting spent in other jurisdictions.
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Seeing none, then, the council was provided a copy of the slide deck that Jen was briefing from via email today. And we will post that slide deck on the city's website this evening for those who would like to see a visual representation of what was presented this evening. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 8:17 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
Fair enough.
Is there anyone who has not signed up desiring to speak at this time? Yes, please. Come to the record?
No.
Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak on the, is there someone in the back?
Are you still addressing the current item?
Seeing no one desired to speak, the public hearing is closed at 8:19. And just to clarify things, what we're doing this evening is not approving what you heard, but directing the administration to prepare the necessary documents, which will be considered by the full council on November the 20th at our regularly scheduled meeting. Stacy?
Thank you. I would move to direct the administration to prepare the necessary documents, ordinance and resolution setting the amount of taxes to be collected in 2018 to include a 1% base increase for adoption at the November 20, 2017 council meeting.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to agenda bill. 7489 Moratorium on Community Health Engagement Locations, Safe Injection Sites. I will open the public hearing at 8:20 and ask if anyone has signed up.
I had a few comments in advance of that.
Okay, Bob.
Thank you. And by your leave, I'm going to make those comments here so the clerk can remove the melting computer and take that upstairs. So, okay, my name's Bob Harrison. I'm the city administrator. So in September of 2016, the Heroin and Opiate Addiction Task Force that was convened by King County in Seattle recommended a comprehensive strategy focusing on prevention and increasing access to addiction treatment on demand. And in 2017, the King County Executive and Seattle Mayor announced they would move forward on a complete set of recommendations, including the establishment of facilities referred to as community health engagement locations or safe injection sites. One of those sites would have been located in the city of Seattle, and the other one was recommended to be located somewhere within King County. As a result of that uncertainty, on October 16, 2017, the council adopted ordinance 2811 establishing an emergency moratorium on safe injection sites, and included findings within that ordinance and set a public hearing for this evening. And that's what is going to come following this. Just to be clear, and what the council did is they directed the Development Services Department to prepare permanent amendments to the permitted uses tables in the city regulations, including but not limited to Section 18.06.130 of the Isqwa Municipal Code and Section 4.3B of the Central Isqwa Development and Design Standards that prohibit community, again prohibit, community health engagement locations, safe injection sites, and other uses or activities designed to provide a location for individuals to consume illicit drugs within the city of Isqwa. The permanent regulations would be developed and then presented to the Planning Policy Commission for recommendation to the city council for action before expiration of the moratorium and interim control adopted by this ordinance. Working with the Development Services Department, they were able to identify the following timeline. So they anticipate by January of 2018, they would have draft code amendments and have a CIPA checklist prepared with a report in February to the Planning Policy Commission for their review. At that time, there would be an agenda bill that would include the proposed code amendments that would, based on our recommendation, prohibit safe injection sites within the city of Isqwa and all zoning, essentially all zoning within the city, it would be a prohibited use, with a referral to the Land and Shore Committee. And we anticipated in March that the Land and Shore Committee would review that and would return for counsel at that second meeting in March for final code adoption. And so, following this public hearing this evening, at the closure of that, the council may choose if it desires to add additional findings of fact that, in addition to what they've already found in the original ordinance, if it so desires. So that's, Mayor, that sets the stage, if you will, for the public here.
Thank you, Bob, and my apologies for getting that you were going to provide that overview.
That's okay. Thanks.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing at 8:23 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
So what typically happens, we'll call all the individuals up. I'm going to call three at a time. So you could, first one up, come and speak, the next two line up right behind there. And then if you haven't signed up, and I have the last person signed up as Samantha Tasio, you would just essentially be, request to be called upon by the mayor, and then you would be able to go up and speak. So the first speaker is Veronica Garcia, followed by Jennifer Asplund, and then Cindy
Hello, members of the council, everyone. My name is Veronica Garcia. I'm a resident here in Isqwa.
I can't hear you.
Better?
Could you pull the mic just a little bit closer to you?
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. All right. My name is Veronica Garcia. I'm a resident here in Isqwa. I'm speaking on behalf of Initiative 27 and the 69,850 voters who signed the initiative. This is the initiative to ban heroin injection sites in King County, for those of you who might not be familiar. Last month, a King County judge took Initiative 27 off of the planned February ballot. This sent a clear message to the county and the cities in King County that Seattle and King County plan to implement injection sites and their agenda regardless of local input. This is alarming and an indication that cities need to take action. We ask for you to join Auburn, Sea-Tac Bellevue, Kent, Renton, Federal Way, and Burien, and the growing list of other cities that have banned injection sites. Snohomish County unanimously voted to ban injection sites across their county. We urge you to follow in Bellevue's footsteps and permanently ban injection sites in Isqwa. Instead, we're asking for you to push for a path forward that chooses treatment first and stand behind efforts to keep our community safe and give truly compassionate care to the most vulnerable members of society. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Asplund, and I reside in North Seattle. I'm here today to urge you all to do a permanent ban on safe injection sites and to remind the public of Isqwa, Bellevue, and across King County that the city council in Seattle has a tendency to use a lot of verbiage. And so don't be fooled when you hear the words CHELS, Community Health Engagement Locations, or CIS, S-I-S, Safe Injection Sites, or the most recent is now SCS, which is Safe Consumption Spaces. They all mean the same thing, and it's the using of heroin and other drugs in what they say is a controlled environment. I have a personal story about heroin. My brother started shooting up when he was in his teens. By the time he was 20, he was stealing cars, he was robbing people, all to feed his habit. In his 30s and 40s, he was doing alcohol and a lot of hard drugs. My brother did not die from a heroin overdose. He died from the long-term use of the very drugs that he was injecting. So to say that having a controlled environment is going to work, you, every day that you're using, you're depleting your brain cells to make a rational decision to stop. I don't know how you can come to a conclusion of when you're ready, which is the criteria that Seattle will give. So I would just urge you to ban these sites permanently and instead, offer 24/7 on-demand treatment, offer mental health and substance abuse services. That's what's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And who are the next three so they can?
After Cindy, we have Steve Foot, Katie Cassidy, and followed by Samantha.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Cindy Pierce, and I'm also a resident of Seattle. And I am here tonight representing the Neighborhood Safety Alliance, which we began about two years ago. We were concerned about the homeless and the RVs in the city of Seattle, and so we started dealing with the city council. And in the middle of that, we were sitting in a city council meeting, and we were, we happened to be there when the individual who runs Insight up in Vancouver, which is their injection site, the only one in North America legally, she gave a two-hour presentation on the, an expert, there's somebody was looking for an expert here. And it was compelling because they spoke about all these people that were not dying inside Insight. And since 2003, when Insight was opened up, they have, they have dealt with about 49,000 users. And they've, and those 49,000 users have done over 3 million injections. And nobody has died inside of that small building. But do you ask the question, how many have died outside of that building? And out of the 49,000 people who have used Insight since 2003, how many of those people are still alive today? We don't have that data. We don't know. We do know that Insight is a hellhole to go see. I've been there. I know what it looks like around there. Women and children are crawling around on the sidewalks. There's drug deals going on right outside the building of Insight. You can do drugs, you can buy and sell drugs without anybody bothering you. Vancouver has had to hire 60-plus police officers to patrol that area. You were concerned about police officers, well, you're going to have to add more. So I'm here today to just encourage you to, to do the right thing and ban these permanently in the city. This is, I don't come to Isqwa very often, but I must say, I'm very impressed. I'm impressed with you. I'm impressed with how you've conducted this meeting. Seattle could learn a lot from you and do the right thing and let's do it and get these, don't allow them to happen. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Cindy.
Steve, Steve Foot, followed by Katie and Samantha.
We're going to restart the clock. That doesn't mean you're through.
Okay, that's fine. You know, I didn't even know I was signing up to speak tonight, but here I am, so I will real shortly. I'm Steve Foot. I am not a direct resident of Isaguac. I rub shoulders. I've been 30 years up on the tail end of the Black Nugget Road here, just, just outside the boundary limit. And I just wanted to come here tonight, support the folks for I-27. As far as expertise goes, I'll claim to be an expert. I'm 70 years old. I've been a student of human behavior and fundamental ways that a lot of people have also. And quite frankly, providing an addict with the means of his self-destruction and, yeah, death is raw insanity to me. You'd, a lot of their references, they'll talk about keeping people alive. From my perspective, you're keeping them dead. There's a difference between keeping someone's body afloat and, on the other hand, watching them die as individuals. We need to provide these people with, with help, and the last thing you give an addict is, is, is death, and that's the injections. As a taxpayer, I will feel violated very deeply if you use any of my tax money to provide these people with the means of their own death. And that's my perception of it. I'm going to get out of the way and let somebody else talk.
Steve, thank you.
Katie?
No.
Not to speak? Samantha?
So I've been a resident for the Isaguac area for a very long time before there was a stoplight. I love Isaguac. I'm here with my family, gone to school, Isaguac High alum, go Indians. I would submit that there is no safe injection of heroin. You've probably figured that out already. I'm a little concerned about, as you mentioned with your overview, illicit drugs. They are illicit, that's a federal offense. Is the host site then liable for violating that law and then allowing somebody else to violate it? Are they then complicit if there is any damage, which I would submit that there's always damage with heroin? Just something to consider. And I would like to see a goal presented. The goal should be something like getting a person to stable housing, a job situation, stable family situation where they're contributing to society. I think ultimately, that's what we've heard, and I've not really heard that in any of this, where it's been coming out of Seattle or even in Vancouver. It doesn't really seem like the goal is to get people out. I would like to see metrics, you know, for whatever treatment there is, metrics for success, you know? What does success look like, so we know if we've gotten there? So as you can tell, I'm from an engineering background, so I like to see things like that. So we, as far as Isaguac goes, yes, you have a small area where the exact city of Isaguac, but there's many, many people, as you know, on Hobart Road, many people come into Isaguac. My daughter truly doesn't live at home anymore, and she still comes here to her doctor and to shop. I have friends that come from Clalum, and I know they're not the only ones that come here to shop. So we really want to keep this a great place. A quick comment on the schools, considering that the homeowner is the one, or the home buyer is the one that really pays the fees, so looking at the school district fees, maybe we need to look at another model of education because it's getting really expensive, and there's many models out there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Samantha.
Hi, I'm Kathy Cassidy, and I'm from Snoqualmie, Washington, and I had about an hour's notice to come to this meeting. And I thank you for giving us a chance to express our opinion as taxpayers about what's going down. Obviously, you people play by the rules. We've listened for quite a while about how your meeting goes on and how you do things legally and above board. If this is put into place, I think it will set a horrible precedent that could come back legally, because as you just read, it, it is the city council that is approving the use of illicit drugs, and I think that's a really big deal. I could go on. I've heard the testimony from Vancouver and that site there, and the quote was, "It is like walking down into hell." And I, I'm sorry I feel so emotionally about this, but I think, not, not only is this a bad idea just for Washington State, but we are kind of known as the bellwether state. And if we approve this here, it will be approved in Oregon, it will be approved in California. And I've kind of been tracking on how these things are falling down. So that's my input, and thank you for giving me a chance to talk.
Thank you, Kathy. Next.
I have no others on my list.
Yes, sir. And anyone else who desires to speak this evening, if you'll line up about three or four, we'll get to you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dale Timmons. I live at 23252 Southeast 54th Place, and I've been a resident of Isaguac for 30 years. When I moved here, I didn't have to lock my doors. Now my neighborhood experiences a robbery once every week or two. And just four months ago, there was a vehicular homicide one block from my home, and this was, this was done by an adolescent who was coming from a party where drugs and alcohol were being used. Now, this was unheard of two decades ago. So drug use and drug distribution is illegal federally and state statutes. So some say that having this injection site may save a life, but as was stated here earlier, these people will inject themselves in any location, not necessarily always at a safe injection site. And so there's really nothing here that's preventing these, these people from giving themselves an overdose. Now, the drug culture brings with it crime, including robbery, assault, and is what happened in my community, murder. Okay, is that really what we want to bring to our community? And so, you know, you want to compare, well, we might save a life. What about the lives of our residents here that are being subjected to this crime? The risk to those lives is much greater than the risk from someone injecting themselves. And again, you're asking the community to endorse crime by illegal drug use and distribution, because that's what's taking place, and asking the community to be subjected to that crime. And so it is inconscionable to allow this to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. You may have to pull the microphone down just a little bit.
Okay, my name is Barbara Lewis. I'm from Auburn. And let me start by saying, I echo what everybody says, but let me also say, I have a granddaughter that's a drug addict. I am not excusing it. I hate it. I am raising two babies at 70 years old. I'm a co-custodian with the baby's aunts. And I asked her this question, and what she said to me was, we need, well, first off, one thing she said to me in response to what somebody said is, "There's worse things than dying." And, you know, that is how she feels. But what she said they need is not a safe and direct, in, safe drug injection location. They need treatment. They can inject anyplace, like was just said. They can go anyplace, they can get anyplace. And what she said is going to happen is you're going to have it here on Main Street or wherever you put it, and the people are going to come to it, and the dealers are going to come to it, because nobody will have to go looking for clients, or nobody will have to go looking for drugs, is because everybody will be here. And like was said, it's going to take down the community. I'm from Auburn. It's horrid. And my suggestion would be to go up to 1116 Summit in Seattle, up behind the McDonald's, where they have the methadone injection place, and just sit in your car for 10 or 15 minutes and watch the people and see who you're dealing with. But what my granddaughter said is what they need is beds. They need places to go for treatment, because they can decide today they want treatment, but they can't get into a treatment bed for six weeks. And lots can change in the meantime. They can change their mind, they can change their whatever. And I heard a quote as I was coming in tonight, and I think it's very applicable, and please excuse the, the color of it, but nonetheless, this would be, as the quote goes, "Like exploding the outhouse." Your community would be horrid thereafter. And I can't tell you enough what some of these places look like, because I've been by them, near them, in them, and that would be my suggestion, is don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hi, my name is Kim Fan. I've been in Isaguac for about four years. So just some numbers. Overdose deaths is now the leading cause of deaths in America, gun about 30, from 18 to 65 years old. Gun is 35,000, and car accident is 37,000, and overdose is about 52,000. It's a huge number. So I used to think that it's just a small number, doesn't affect anyone. That's not true. So this, this SCS have reception where they'll be greeted, there's a waiting area, there's an injection room where they can wash their hands, and they can use clean and sterilized equipment. And while they're injecting, there are people monitoring them to make sure that it's safe. There's a clinic onsite, there's counseling and support offices, and they usually come with supportive housing right next to the SCS and, and people who seek treatment as So I want to address some of the myths that people think that safe SCS increase public disorder in the surrounding community. I don't think it's true, because first, it reduces public drug use, and two, it reduces discarded serine at the, at the street, where I have found some, and reduce the spread of HIV or hepatitis C, which can go around and hit somebody you know. Another myth is safe SCS encourage drug use. Study have shown that it does not encourage drug use. In fact, it encourages treatment. The participant of SCS are more likely to enter detox and treatment services. Another myth is safe consumption costs too much. So there are a lot of studies on this, and for San Francisco, study have shown that we save 3.5 million a year, and Baltimore, we save 6 million a year. And I've looked at the proposed number for, for SCS in King County, treatment was 162 million, prevention and intervention is 48 million, and recovery and aftercare is 14 million, and the cost to spend on SCS is proposed to be only 2 million. Last, last year, there were 200, 332 people that die of overdose in King County. And if you think about human life, I don't think 2 million really stand up for it. To conclude, I want to quote Lauren Davis, the director of King County Recovery Coalition. Across the street from my home, I saw a young woman searching for a vein. If we have not safe consumption sites, who then will wait beside her and make sure her lungs keep breathing? Who then will show her the path to recovery? Who then will tell her she's loved? As long, as long as there's breath, there's hope. And that concludes...
Thank you, Kim.
...what I have.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Ivan Games. I am an Isaguac resident. I have been here for five years. And if there's one thing that I've done since I started hearing about safe injection sites is do my homework and actually read the research. And I am a researcher by profession. I have a PhD in behavioral sciences, and what I do and what I specialize on is understanding the patterns of human behavior and what incentives drive those patterns. If you want to understand this, where the opioid epidemic came from and where the drug epidemic came from, you should read a book called Dreamland by Sam Quinones. It is the most eye-opening, most eye-opening story I could ever, you know, offer anybody to read. And it came from the fundamental driver of the opioid epidemic, of those 53,000 people that are dying a year in this country, came from a pie-in-the-sky goodwill idea from doctors in the East Coast who decided to make pain the fifth vital sign. Essentially, being driven, being driven by pharmaceutical industries that are being sued today by three states in the country to go and throw pills that they knew very well were highly addictive to people who had pain instead of implementing pain management that we invented in Washington State. The University of Washington, Dr. Bonica at the University of Washington created the first clinic on pain management without drugs, and that pain clinic was shut down purely because it was cheaper to send people pills that they could pop and get addicted to. And today, that is the main driver. Today, that pill mills and cheap heroin, cheap black tar heroin coming from Mexico are the drivers of the heroin crisis. The safe injection site will not solve that problem in a million years. What it's going to do, it's just going to do something that I call, we've seen this story before. Somebody mentioned the methadone sites down in, down in Auburn. You want to see what this injection site will create, go see those sites. It is essentially concentrating the market for drugs so that the worst elements in our society can come and take advantage of it and sell their drugs cheaply. And I know this firsthand. I come from Mexico. I grew up in Mexico. I can tell you stories, not only of addiction, but of 15-year-olds being hanged in their backyard by drug cartels because they were not selling the drug that was necessary. Yes, 50,000 people die a year in this country. Over 40,000 Mexicans have died in the drug war in the attempt to push drugs into this country, enabled by failure in policy, in border policy, in our ability to control, and more importantly, in our well-intentioned pie-in-the-sky idea that by enabling more people to just consume and be ready, one day they will be ready, we will sort this out. The reality is, they have not been ready since prohibition. People are still dying of alcohol. People are still dying of, you know, violence related to these things. I ask you, as council members, to really look deep into your consciousness and think, how many people are we going to enable to die here and abroad by continuing this? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ivan.
My name's Deborah Adams. I'm an osteopathic physician. I manage pain. I do some locums work at a medication-assisted treatment facility in Bellevue. I participate on a weekly basis at the University of Washington in their telemedicine conference on pain management. And what the prior gentleman said was true in that when we started asking to treat pain, the idea was give people as much medication as they wanted until they said they were okay. Today, that thinking is 180 degrees the other way, and the University of Washington is actually leading the country with the CDC in posting guidelines about safe opioid use, which generally is... which generally is less is more, and if you can avoid it at all costs, please do so. In my experience, and I have both personal experience, anecdotal experience, treatment experience as a physician, and counseling with my patients and others, there are only a few ways to effectively treat addiction. One is the methadone maintenance program for very hardcore intravenous users. Those people rarely become productive members of society. The other is the abstinence method prescribed by 12-step programs, which actually are effective in changing behavior, which over time do create what is called a sober mindset. And medication-assisted treatment. Medication-assisted treatment is exactly what the initial presenter here, who said, "We want people who are employable, who are stable, who are productive." Medication-assisted treatment provides that to people. It keeps them away from being craving, and it keeps them away from being in withdrawal and provides a dose of opioid medication sufficient to keep them away from these harmful behaviors. There is, as well as addiction to a substance, an addiction to using a needle. And that is almost a more difficult symptom to treat than the craving for the drug. And I would encourage you with all of my heart to not foster a plan which keeps needles in the hands of addicts in any way, shape, or form. I think it's unconscionable what the city of Seattle has done in ignorance and absolute deafness to many, many people, of which I am one, who signed the petition I-27. And I think it's disgusting what they're doing, but that is the way Seattle operates. They make decisions and public comment is of absolutely no importance in changing the plan. I implore you not to go that route. It's a bad idea to put needles in the hands of addicts. Medication-assisted treatment is what works. It allows people to become stable in their brain. It allows them to incorporate and absorb principles of sobriety and sober living, which over time do change their lives, do make them productive, and do get them contributing to society in a way that continuing a habit particularly as obnoxious as injecting something into your body, it just has absolutely no, no place in compassion. And that's the biggest thing. Don't get shamed into the idea that if you're not going along with this idea of safe injection, that you're not humane, that you're not compassionate. There is nothing compassionate about allowing an addict to continue to use drugs. So I applaud you for considering this prohibition. I would urge you to make it a prohibition because there is no place in effective treatment of addiction for anything like a safe injection site. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, please.
My name is Molly Jester, and I am an Issaquah resident and a parent. I object to injection sites, and I would like to ask the city council to have a permanent ban on injection sites in Issaquah. I also want to thank you guys for having this meeting tonight and letting everyone speak. I'm super touched that no one here is attacking people that use drugs. I think if you're against injection sites, there's this fallacy that you're somehow against users and their families, who I have the utmost respect for people going through addiction and their relatives. I just do not think it's compassionate to help people shoot up, as the last speaker said so eloquently. I would rather, if it costs $2.1 million to run an injection site every year, I'd rather we spent $2.1 million on rehab on demand and have permanent solutions to addiction versus temporary Band-Aids that will lead to permanent brain damage and more drug usage and criminals in our community. Thank you so much to everyone.
Thank you, Molly. Next, please.
My name is Santal Chandran. I'm a resident of Issaquah. I just want to be clear, I'm not here to speak for or against the injection site. I just want to lay out some facts and want everybody to make the decision for themselves. You know, with the social media, it's quite easy to fall into the trap of listening to all false information. And you guys can go fact-check what I say, too. So don't trust me, please do check. One thing is, does council members and everybody in the audience know that you are not required to ban it? King County's council passed an ordinance prohibiting the opening of a safe consumption site without a city's explicit approval. So unless you guys don't approve, nobody's going to come and set up a shop here tomorrow for a safe consumption site. So you don't really have to ban it. What you are doing by coming up with these bans, which they are not requiring you to do, is you are avoiding the conversation to happen, whether it is good or bad for the society. You're not, you are giving your opinion to the citizens that the conversation of whether for them to decide whether this should happen or not from happening. That's one. And then the other point is, I mentioned, and I keep hearing this a lot, that I don't want my tax dollars to be used towards the safe consumption site. I would not either, but, but the fact is, we are already paying 0.1 sales tax towards King County's mental illness and drug dependency. So this tax dollars is already used. When somebody is overdosing on the streets, this tax dollars are already used. It is far more expensive to treat people in those emergency situations rather than spending that money in a safer environments. Okay? And then there is also some belief that people, just because you have a safe injection site in your neighborhood, that people are going to come travel from different counties and from everywhere to inject themselves. That's not true. Some studies have shown that only the users only travel about eight to 10 blocks to the safe injection sites for their purposes. It's not like they're going to, you know, carpool together and come here to a site or take public transportation and travel so much. So yeah, I mean, that's about it. So I would like everybody to, you know, fact-check everything that they hear and make a decision for yourself. You know, I mean, I've been fortunate that none of the drug addictions have anything attached to my family or my close friends. But one thing that I feel as a community member, if, for God forbid, if something should touch my family, I would like my community to fight that fight with me and not me, leave me hanging to fight that fight for myself. I would really feel valued by living in a community that is going to help me fight that fight. Thank you.
And if you could put your contact information on the yellow sheet up there, that would be helpful as the next person comes forward.
Yellow sheet here or the yellow sheet back there? That's fine.
Good evening, council members. I'm Margaret Hall. I live in Overdale Park, 5647 to 29th Avenue Southeast. I would like to share my concerns about the actions that you may take, which would preclude citizens from getting the help they need and which also could make our communities safer and healthier by allowing this opportunity. And I'm not here to advocate for these sites, but I am advocating that you look at our community and address what is the problem. Do not, please, make your decision based on fear, but on facts. Recently, in the Nation's Health, which is the newsletter of the American Public Health Association, in their August newsletter, there was a small blurb. And when the subject came up online a few weeks ago, I was reminded of this blurb. And so I looked it up, went back and found it, and I want to read it to you. This is a reiteration of a cost-benefits analysis done by the city of Baltimore, Maryland. Was published originally in the Harm Reduction Journal. This study calculated how much a safe consumption space would save if one were opened in Baltimore, Maryland. The estimates were generated using the data from the safe space in Vancouver. Researchers found that running a 1,000-square-foot space in Baltimore for 18 hours a day would cost $1.8 million a year. However, the Baltimore space would also generate $7.8 million in annual savings, preventing four HIV infections, that's AIDS, 21 hepatitis C infections, 374 days in the hospital for skin and soft tissue infections, prevent six overdose deaths, 108 overdose-related ambulance calls, 78 emergency department visits, and 27 overdose-related hospitalizations. In addition, about 121 additional people would enter addiction treatment. Quote, "No one has ever died from an overdose in a safe consumption space." I think someone else noted that earlier this evening, said the lead, the study's lead author, Susan Sherman, professor at the Johns Hopkins University Bloomberg School of Public Health in a news release. Instead, thousands of Canadian lives have been saved. Of course, I don't know how many died outside the street, but anyway. The purpose of the study say, "We want them to walk through a door that may eventually lead to a successful treatment and keep them alive until they are able to do that." Again, I want to repeat, I'm not here to advocate for the sites, but I am here to advocate that you do a thorough study of your community needs. Maybe your time and attention needs to be put into prevention. Maybe it needs to be put into the pharmaceutical issues that are related. I also appreciated the forerunner before me stating that, my understanding too, is that nothing can be done here in Issaquah unless you approve it, not because you prohibit it. So indeed, I do request that you put more time into this. Please do not make this a permanent decision. Who knows? Things may change. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Margaret.
My name is Claude Allen. I'm a security professional downtown Seattle, on the waterfront. I've been doing this for about five years, and I don't want to see, I call them shooting galleries, I don't want to see those come to any city. I've seen just about everything in five years.
I want to adjust the microphone just a little bit.
Is that better?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I've seen just about everything there is to see when it comes to drugs. I've been doing this for five years. I'm a security professional downtown, downtown core. I've worked at Columbia Sports Square for a year and a half. And I've been at Tiffany's downtown, Westlake Park. I'm currently at Amtrak. So I see a lot of drug users. I don't want to see, I don't want to see safe injection sites or shooting galleries. They're not good for anyone. And that's about all I have to say.
Claude, thank you. Next, please.
I didn't realize when I came I fell in love with Issaquah. I was invited to come, so I didn't...
Would you please identify yourself?
Oh, my name is Mamie Fu. I live in Bellevue. And I'm very happy that Bellevue chose not to have an injection site. I'm a trained scientist. I'm also a trained professional in the field of medicine. But right now, because of time limit, I'm going to make mine really short as a Chinese, but also an American. So I'm more American than Chinese. So I choose to share with you a little bit of Chinese history. If you would remember the Opian War in China. So, you know, a lot of opium got shipped to China. They didn't choose to take opium, but everybody was taking it. It was legal. Nobody got to put in jail by the emperor of the Qing Dynasty. So this opioid addiction in China totally wiped out the dynasty system. Not to say that the dynasty system was any good, but that was how it ended on the Qing Dynasty. And the Chinese race was very humiliated. And to rebuild a new country, it wasn't easy. And so up to this day, you know, I'm glad that the Chinese race still got to live. So I would recommend that we learn something from history, that the opian addiction in China totally wiped out everything. So much money was gone. Just think of all the money that could raise another generation of young men or young women. Didn't happen there. So I would totally suggest that we permanently not go with the injection site because of the Chinese experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Artiom. I am Issaquah resident, homeowner for a couple of years, and just want to share some impressions. So I was living, excuse me?
Could you speak a little closer into the microphone, please?
Okay, I'll try. Yeah, so I live here in Issaquah, I'm homeowner. Initially, I came to North America to Vancouver. I'm software engineer, and Microsoft brought me here. And first, they placed me to Vancouver downtown, quite close to that safe injection site that is over there. And the first thing I did on the first weekend, I went there to discover the city. And when I went to the east side, east side of downtown, there were some, a couple of young ladies that, who just stopped me right on the street. I was walking with my family and said, like, excuse me, sir, where I going? You probably don't want to go there with your family. My English was much worse that day, but I got the idea that they do not recommend me to go there. On the next day, I asked my relocation specialist, like, what's wrong with that area? And she took me for some quick car ride through the area. We traveled there, well, just for those of you who think that it's a good idea to have that site here, just travel there to Vancouver, it's a couple hours from here. There are drunk people on the streets, I mean, drunk because of drugs. They just walked through the area, there are no normal people. We traveled there, and she said to me, like, if you ever want to come back here, don't even stop your car. We drove through there. There were people just literally coming by to our car just to take a look. And so just think why people do not want to walk there, do not want, well, they are trying to escape that area. And also, I heard that that area was not great even before that site. That might be true. But then think why Vancouver city government decided to put that site there, to those slums, not to some expensive area to the west from downtown where... Not to some expensive area to the west from downtown where you can't find anything cheaper than probably $1 million. Homeowners would be freaked out if somebody would propose to bring all those drug addicts there. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Kelstrom, and I've been here in Issaquah for about two years. And I just wanted to actually say that I, I'm a single parent, and I had my kids pretty young, and so I know a lot of people who lost their kids because they were addicted to drugs. And I, my kid's father, actually, he's in and out of jail for drugs, and so I'm really curious how I could ever rationalize a treatment center down the street from me, because I tell my kids, you know, you can't see your dad because he's doing drugs, but, you know, there are people down the street doing drugs, and that just, please, please don't bring this here, because I really don't want drugs back in, back in my life, because I work so hard to, you know, get away from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
I'm Bob Landers. I live at 5 through 39, 220th Avenue, southeast in Issaquah, have been here for 14 years. I've sent each of you an extensive email today, thank you, Mary, for responding, about my opposition to the six-month ban and making it a permanent ban for injection sites here in Issaquah. I won't go through the extensive email, because y'all can read that, but a couple things I would say. I am retired, so I have the ability to do a lot of research, not only on the Vancouver site, but also on the 90-plus sites in Europe. And if you look at the research, contrary to what some may have said today, none of the research effort is, in those areas, is to fix the root cause. It is simply an enablement for folks on, that have the drug problem, to deal with drugs. And so my challenge to us as a community, as some have said, is let's approach it from a holistic approach and address the root cause and find solutions for these unfortunate people, because all of us have empathy for folks that are on drugs and any other type of addiction. But enabling people without solutions is not the answer. For example, up in Vancouver, if y'all looked at the research, only 4% of the 6,000-plus people that went to the site last year went to a program that would address their issue. 4%. And this area up there spent $4.5 million for that 4%. So my charge to us is, one, is that. Second challenge is the role model as leaders in our community, as you are, is to step up and say to the children in our community that we do not tolerate illegal activity. So be it drugs or other activities, be it, would we say that we would support domestic abuse because there's some issue with that? Clearly not. So my charge to us as leaders in our communities is to be courageous and set the message that says, we'll address the root cause and we'll attack the problem, and we have empathy for those that have needs, but we cannot send a message to our young people that says, we will tolerate some illegal activity, but not others. Then lastly, I would challenge us as leaders to say, why add to the complexity? We talked much earlier in today's council meeting and others about the other challenges we have in this wonderful community we have. Why do we want to add the complexity of potentially endorsing drug use and other illegal activities and not addressing more critical causes to make this one of the best cities in America to live in? Thank you much.
Thank you, Bob. Next, please.
Hi there. My name is Alex. I live in the Renton Highlands. I just want to say thank you, guys, for hearing this issue. I think it's a very important issue, and I just want to ask that you ban the heroin safe injection sites permanently in Issaquah. I also want to thank everyone who had personal stories about loved ones or family members who have dealt with this, with a heroin addiction. I think hearing those stories is really important, because we can hear from the source. And the more people I talk to who have gone through that, the more I hear them saying this isn't a good idea. This is from people who have, you know, gone through it themselves and were able to recover, people like some of the other speakers who had, you know, children or other loved ones. So let's continue this, you know, topic, let's keep talking about it, because we do need to find a solution. We do need to be compassionate, but I don't think the injection sites are the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Alex, if you could sign that yellow sheet, please. Robert, are you back again?
Is it legal? Well, I looked at your website to find out what was speaking and what were the topics, and I saw this was one of the topics. I personally, I've gotten to know practically most of you guys in different ways. Some I've known a lot longer than others, but I can't even imagine you guys would ever vote for us. Anyway, that's just my personal opinion, but anyway. So I'm not even worried about that, to be quite honest, so that being said. I just wanted to thank Christie, I think she had to leave, but I think what she had shared was, what I wanted to talk about was, maybe we need to have something the opposite. How about having parenting training time, where you can talk about drug use with your kids when you're really young? Just to give you a little background on my family growing up, it's, I had one brother go to prison for murder. I had one die of AIDS. My mom was schizophrenic. It affected me so deeply, because I knew, I wanted to have kids, I couldn't wait to have kids. Personally, I love my dad, greatest guy I ever met. He told me, just because of his marriage, he told me about, on a weekly basis, don't ever get married, so. In the back of my mind, I go, well, I got some things to work on, but I can't wait to get married. And I couldn't wait to have kids, but you know, I knew that I had to have a plan for kids, that I had to have, you know, talk to other people. I had to, I got lots of advice when my wife was pregnant, just, and she, I asked, hey, why are you close to, are you close to your dad? Yes or no? And whenever they were close to their dad, they told me, I asked them why. They said, because we had great talks. Whenever they said no, it's because they said we never talk. And that stuck with me from the moment my daughter was born, that I would always, always talk to my daughter. And anyway, don't mean to cry, but I love my kids. And what Christie talked about, she became a great parent. I shook her hand, because that was somebody that looked at their kids and said, I need to change something for my kids' sake. So maybe it would be a great thing to go the other way and go, hey, let's have a parent, kid, teen talk, where we all get together and we have a great talk with our kids, maybe on a monthly basis, maybe a six-month basis, I don't know exactly how it all works, but I know I needed a lot, I had, I didn't get married until I was 28, because I had a lot of things to learn and unlearn. And I think if you had both my kids up here, if they see this video, I don't know if they are or not, sorry, kids, but I think they would both say, wow, you know, my dad really loved me. I hope they'd say that. But my three goals, oh, yellow light, three goals was for them to graduate high school, because that's a totally destroy your life. Don't get pregnant before you graduate high school, and don't get somebody pregnant before you graduate high school, one of each. And the other one was, don't get involved with drugs. And so we watched movies, we did all kinds of things, and we talked about it afterwards, because it just can destroy your life. So I'm going to present to you, let's have something positive, and let's not wait until they get involved with drugs, it's just so devastating. Let's do something positive. Why not? Let's Issaquah set an example for the rest of the, you know, if it spreads some here, well, let's spread something positive, and let's get involved with all the parents, and the young parents especially. Let them have an opportunity to start talking now. And maybe you guys, I think you guys are awesome people, I know everybody in different ways, but let's do it.
Thank you, Robert. Dave Fitz?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I must say, it was a little more civil in here than I expected it to be. But if you saw election materials from Bellevue and other places, it's about as ugly as it ever gets. But let's think about, why are we, I mean, we've got, what, five and a half more months of talking about this, possibly? It's a waste of staff time, in my view, to be writing ordinance and stuff to write against something that's never going to happen here. This is, somebody mentioned 18-hour days, that's seven days a week, 18 hours, how many people are you going to staff? How many hundreds of people a day need to come to the facility? It's, you know, where are you going to put it? Across the street, community hall, you got five, you got bus transportation, you got police and fire on both sides of it? It's not going to happen. Maybe you want to put it, you'd love it, closer to the other end of town, this man's end of town, because you've got a fire station there, and you've got a transit center there, so people can get by transfers to the, to the buses that come through our transit center, you can get people from the whole eastern part of King County. It's just not going to happen here. Whether it should happen in Seattle, another question. But let's not keep dragging this out and be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I say, is there anyone else desiring to comment before I close the public hearing?
It's almost break time, I would assume. So Joshua Freed from the city of Bothell, I'm with I-27, with the chief sponsor for I-27. We gathered 69,850 signatures with 1,000 volunteers. You've all run for office, so you know that's an extraordinary number. This has been an item in this election season and for the last six months that's been in the news, has been very prevalent in conversations across King County and even beyond. There's a lot of attention on this, and there's going to be a lot of attention on you as well. And of course, you've heard from a lot of people tonight on this issue, passionate about this, because we're for the user, somebody that is currently living under an addiction that is heartbreaking, it's a path towards suicide. With those people that signed on, they have a lot of personal stories, even some were shared tonight, a lot of passion on this, because they've lost loved ones. So we gathered 69,850 signatures with this Initiative 27. We got it validated. It was going on in the February 13 ballot, and then the ACLU and the city of Seattle decided in their grand wisdom to file suit against Initiative 27 and ban our constitutional right to participate in the process. And so just about two weeks ago, King County judge and Superior Court, who are very far out in her positions on thing, decided to take our constitutional rights from 1.3 million voters in King County. We're, of course, with I-27 are going to be fighting that in the Washington State Supreme Court sometime in December or January. We're asking for an expedited schedule, so we're on that path. My hope is for each one of you, have you been to Canada? Have you seen the nearest heroin injection site? If you not, if you've not done so, that is your responsibility as an elected official. If you're going to entertain regulations as you are tonight, you will and should be held responsible by the people that elect you to office, because you are elected to your seat where you sit. The citizens of Issaquah own those seats, and you, in the next election, will have to answer that. You were the counsel that said, we want regulations to entertain having heroin injection site in the city of Issaquah. That is a big burden on you, and one that I hope that you take very seriously. Listen, I've been to Canada, taken my wife several times, which, a great date night, right? Been up there five times, walked the streets of each tasting, sat down on the sidewalk, talked to people. One time I went up there, my wife and I got out of the car, not even 200 feet from the front door. We walked as police officer was driving slowly by, as we watched five people shooting up heroin in their arms on the street. I walked right in front of insight, right within the 30 or 40-foot width frontage of that, and talked to Sarita. After I finished talking to Sarita, she took a needle out and shot heroin up in her arm, and then started bleeding on the sidewalk. The undercover police officer who I took up there with me took a picture with his iPhone, she took a knife out and started stabbing the building. So I walked down, so I left. So I walked down a little bit further, sat down on the street with three different people, and then an MS-13 team member came up with tattooed face and said, this conversation is over. Of course, I agreed, and I continued to walk on down the street. Listen, the heroin injection site atmosphere in that five-block radius is frightening, not in the sense that I was scared for my safety, because I had two undercover police officers with me, and I'm a black belt, but that's a whole other issue of itself. What is frightening is the broken lives that are there. As I've walked by, I've seen so many young girls that are gaunt in the face, their bodies are deteriorating, and they're selling their bodies for dollars, just so they can buy their heroin. The, just a block and a half away, there's a park that sits there, there are 40 tents in the park. My wife tried to take a picture with her iPhone, she was yelled at. There are needles littering the streets, people are passed on in the streets, there's 5,000 users that live within a five-block radius. There were some statistics tonight that nobody moves there, they don't go beyond eight blocks, that's completely false, that's not an accurate statement. I talked to many people who have moved from Quebec and other places throughout Vancouver. Those statements are coming from people that I don't understand. Listen, the environment around a heroin injection site is cataclysmic, I can't even say the word, it's apocalyptic. Where, in Bothell, we have a treatment center, Methadone Clinic, where people can go get Subloxone and get help, that environment around that is nothing like you see around a heroin injection site. Issaquah should be known as a place that is dedicated to get people back to treatment, not a place that people continue to use. They spend $4.5 million a year on one site in Canada. King County is talking about opening two, that's $9 million that's going to be stolen toward the most radical change in drug policy in America. And if Issaquah wants to have that as their identity, then you will hang it around your necks, and you'll be responsible for it. My hope is that you will make a choice for the treatment and for the user, and create an atmosphere that says, welcome to Issaquah, we want to make sure that you get back to health, that is what we're committed to as people of Issaquah. So I hope that you vote for a permanent ban tonight, not entertain regulations that would allow for a heroin injection site. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Yes, I don't see anyone else signed up to speak. Normally, I would, I would say, please don't applaud if you agree or disagree with the speaker, but if you agree, or raise your hand if you agree with the speaker.
Good evening. Keep this very short, just one thing to say, my name's Reed, live down 190th. I have struggled with addiction, not heroin, but it literally is the dumbest thing I've heard, is to allow people to, or promote it, I guess. You know, you don't, you don't treat that epidemic with letting people do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reed. I saw it, and so did the rest of the council. Is there anyone else desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, the public hearing is closed at 9:28. And the purpose of this public hearing was to hear from the 24 people that spoke this And so there is a moratorium in effect right now. That moratorium is, will remain in effect through April 16, 2018. Does the council have any direction that they want to provide to the administration this evening? Stacy?
Well, I think just to be clear, clearer, when you ask the question, does the council want to provide any direction to the administration, I think you mean any additional direction, because the direction to the administration is to prepare amendments to the code that would prohibit safe injection sites.
Absolutely.
The question is whether the council wants to revise that direction to the mayor's office.
Seeing none then, we will now move to our final item under regular business, Agenda Bill 7462, amending school impact fees. This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, Paul Marz.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to refer Agenda Bill 7462 back to the November 14, 2017 Council Services and Safety Committee, returning to the full council on December 4, 2017.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. Any, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would. Since this issue has come before Services and Safety, I have seen a number of questions, both from my fellow council members and from folks in the community around this issue. What is the city council's role? What are the city council's options? Why, you know, what, why does the school district want to do what the school district wants to do in regards to impact fees? And so what I'd like to do is take the questions that have been generated by my fellow council members, and then allow the administration and the Issaquah school district to return to Services and Safety with answers to those questions.
Thank you. Any additional- Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none then, all those in favor of referring Agenda Bill 7462 back to services and safety, returning to the full council on December 4.
December 4.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Now moving to good of the order, does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening? Tola.
I do. So I would like to get the council's thoughts. So the motion that's going to be before the Sound Cities Association pick next week says, and I won't go through all the language, but I'll go through the highlights. Sound Cities Association urges the Washington State Legislature to take the following actions in 2018. One is adjusting the property tax cap, urges the legislature to give local governments the option to replace the arbitrary annual 1% cap with a limit tied to inflation plus population growth. It isn't specifying what that limit should be. Invest in public health services, urges the legislature to fund the core public health services provided by local health jurisdictions. And then address housing and homelessness crisis, urges legislature to partner with us to address homelessness, increases the supply of affordable housing by expanding and making permanent the document recording fee, to invest $200 million in the Housing Trust Fund, allow local governments to create and preserve affordable housing through optional local tools. And the SCA urges the legislature to address other underlying issues of homelessness by making investments in our state's behavioral health system and enacting legislation to prohibit source-of-income discrimination. So, that is the proposed agenda. I think it was intentionally kept very light, so that folks could know what were the really most important issues, rather than having a long list. But I want to find out if anybody on council has any objections or concerns, or if we can say that our council strongly supports making this the 2018 SCA agenda.
Input for Tola. I was quite a list, I'm not sure I can remember all of the list. When, will this action be taken at the upcoming pick?
It will.
Which is on?
The, that would be Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 8th.
Okay.
So again, it's adjusting the property tax cap, investing in public health services, address housing and homelessness crisis. Those are the three central pillars, and that is all in the SCA, the SCA call for the upcoming meeting.
Mary Lou?
So, strongly support everything that's in there, also kind of a little intimidated by the amazingly huge problems that you're putting together. That's, that's a big order, but I think they've, they've chosen well, they support it.
Great, thank you.
Other comments? Bill?
I'd support that as well, Tola, go for it.
Okay, well, Mariah, I saw you raise, I saw you nod your head.
I'll raise my hand. I just wanted to say, I do, I do support that. A lot of that is, there's a lot to it, but I really support that, but appreciate that they've also narrowed things down. Thank you, Tola.
Okay, it sounds like, Tola, you've got council support and direction for dealing with that issue.
The most powerful words at pick are, my city feels. So it is a joy to be able to use those words.
Is there anything else for good of the order this evening? There will not be an executive session, we are adjourned.